Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Bellefonte Borough Council Work Session. No council action, either making motions or approvals, is taken during the work session. Tonight, first, we are going to learn more about the Little House Project, and I believe, Denise, you are up.
Thank you very much for having me.
Unless you want to do it differently, and that's okay, too.
I'm Denise Sticker, the Executive Director of the Center County Library and Historical Museum, and we're here this evening because we've been working on some plans to reconfigure the porch and the sidewalk of the Girl Scout Little House, which sits in the back of Miles Hume's house, which is the administrative offices of the Center County Library and Historical Museum. The project has kind of evolved from replacing some steps from the porch down into the garden to reconfiguring the entire porch and stairway to make it ADA accessible. And so, we've been looking at some different options, and I would like to introduce John Sengel, who is Chairperson of our Property Committee, and Cargill Engelsby, who is our Board President, to kind of walk you through what our plans are. So, thank you.
Thanks, Denise. Thanks, Denise. Again, my name's John Sengel. I'm the Chair of the Property Committee. I guess the easiest way to maybe to start folks through this who may not be familiar is Debbie was kind enough to put a packet together of pictures. So, if you start in the first picture in the series, obviously, this is the Girl Scout Little House. It's a building that's owned by the Center County Library and Historical Museum. It's on a long-term lease agreement with the Girl Scouts. At one time, that was, I don't want to get into too much detail, but at one time, that was kind of the regional Girl Scouts. At some point in time, within the last 10 years, the regional Girl Scouts decided, and I think this applied nationally, they wanted to get out of having real estate. So, the actual oversight of the building, maintenance, you know, taking care of it, transferred from the formal Girl Scouts to a separate entity with their own board called Friends of the Girl Scout Little House. They obviously still very much support the Girl Scouts, but they're a separate entity from the Girl Scouts proper, so I just kind of wanted to make that clear. They've been excellent tenants, but let me just start by looking at these pictures. If you look at this first picture, you see the main doorway, the back of the building comes out directly onto an alley. So, this is the main entrance, because that, the back entrance dumps you right onto the street, right under the traffic, so that's not, that's not an option as far as use goes. But in any event, what started this whole discussion was, if you look at this first picture, to the left of that, in the lower part of the building, you see kind of a dark area by some white flowers. Those are the existing steps that come from the ramp, entryway into that building, and come down into our children's garden area at the rear of the building. Is everybody kind of familiar with that, or can see that in the picture? That's what started this whole discussion, because those steps are not code compliant, they don't have railings, they're out of alignment, and we're concerned from a layover standpoint and the public getting hurt. So, that prompted a discussion of initially looking at just replacing the steps, but as we started to look at things a little more broadly, it became clear that there was other issues relating to the Girl Scout Little House in general. If you look at the next page, that would be the view coming into the Girl Scout Little House from Howard Street. It's standard four-foot-wide sidewalk. The trouble is, and you can then go to the next page, I think, yeah, the next page, there's steps up into the Girl Scout house, so there's not handicapped accessibility into that building. And so, the more we thought about it, and the more we talked to our engineer and codes, who said it would be have to be, this project would have to be reviewed by the codes enforcement. So, it got us to thinking, well, why not look at this more comprehensively, address the accessibility issue to the Girl Scout house, at the same time, we address the upgrade of the steps from that same walkway down into our, the rear of our building where we use for children's programming and that sort of stuff. So, it made sense to us to view the whole project in a more holistic approach, and that's kind of what got us to where we are now. What our structural engineers, fellow by the name of Brian Shilton over in Bollesburg, included in your packet also is a set of drawings. They are not by any means finalized drawings, or drawings that would be ready for submittal to codes, but we needed something to kind of at least assess what some of the options were. And they basically are from top to bottom. The topmost drawing is a detail of what things look like now. So, a set of steps coming down into the rear of the lawn area, the children's area, and then steps going up to the Girl Scout house, again, meaning there's no handicapped accessibility into that building for Girl Scouts. And then, the two below that are just different options as to where to place the steps and provide a ramp into the Girl Scout house, so there's handicapped accessibility, and at the same time, giving us a set of steps with railings that are wide enough and compliant with code down into the rear of our Historical Museum and the children's programming area. The final option at the bottom is not including any stairways, but that's, that's an option that collectively, we decide amongst ourselves, ourselves, the Girl Scout Little House folks, and the Bellefonte Garden Club that use those steps all the time, that that was not an option. So, we're basically looking at one of those two middle options as a general idea of what we've got in mind. Again, I want to emphasize, these are not in any way finalized drawings as far as details, railings, you know, a lot of the other details, but it was just an idea to kind of get us started on what our options were. So, right now, there's three groups involved with this discussion. There's the Center County Library and Historical Museum, there's the Bellefonte Garden Club, who uses this whole area actively for their gardening at the Girl Scout house, and all their programming activities, youth activities they had, and then their up and down and ingress and egress into our lawn area at the back of the museum building, as well as the people that, the girls, the Friends of the Girl Scout Little House, that are our tenants in that building. So, those are the three groups that we've been talking amongst ourselves, kind of as where we go from here. Obviously, funding is our main concern, so we got some general quotes, and they were, again, very ballpark quotes, based on a prevailing wage situation, and the two options in the middle range between about $60,000 and $62,000, some thousand-odd dollars. Again, those are ballpark figures. I don't know that we'll see, we won't be able to get a detailed estimate until we have a detailed drawing that they can actually formally bid on. So, we wanted to make sure that the folks here in the borough were aware of, you know, of the project we're thinking of. We think that's got a lot of value for a lot of reasons: handicapped accessibility, safety for not only the folks that use those steps regularly at the garden club and the Girl Scouts, but also the general public, and our patrons as well, that use that area for programming, children's programs, that sort of stuff, Easter egg hunts, all sorts of different things. So, we wanted to make the council aware of our ongoing discussions as we work through this, and certainly make the council aware as well, that we are, we would be very appreciative, or certainly consider, if there's any way that the borough could give us some financial assistance moving forward, once we have, obviously, a detailed design. But our main purpose tonight was to make you aware of the project that we're considering, kind of some of the rough details of what we're thinking, and make sure it was on your radar moving forward, you know, as you consider other things going on in the borough and your financial capabilities. So, we'd certainly answer any questions you have, based on at least what we know to this point, if anybody has any.
I have a question for you. With the ramp, I thought ADA required 2 percent drop, you know, drop, not 7 or whatever. I can't, I don't know what these numbers mean, but what is, you know what the ramp would be, once you put it in?
What the actual slope is? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know that, but Brian Shilton put it together, is, put it, put those, the elevations are based on being in compliance with those, those maximum slopes on ramps, so it would, it would reflect, you know, either of those two options in the middle. My understanding, based on our discussion with him, was either one would be complying as far as slope goes. I don't know what that exact number is. And obviously, the other thing is, we'd have railings. I mean, that's, that detail's not shown, but there would be railings on any, on any ramp above a certain slope, the railings are required, so that's, that's another thing that will come into it. And it's a detail that's not shown on there, because like I said, these were pretty much very preliminary, preliminary attack at it, so. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, but you could take a look out back here, what we did from that door that comes out to the street then, you might want to take a look at that and get an idea of what that looks like.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, John, thank you for explaining all this to us. Can you tell us what other funding sources you've looked at, whether grants or municipal support from other municipalities who use the library system?
Sure, I'll be happy to answer that. We have been exploring different grant opportunities to help fund this. I was unsuccessful in an application with the Center Foundation Giving Circle, and we were encouraged to apply to one of their other programs, which we will be doing. We also are working with the American Association of University Women, because obviously, Girl Scouting is something that impacts women, and so, I did submit an application with them as well, and the, I believe the notification will be sometime in mid-November, so we haven't heard from that yet. We have met extensively with members of the garden club. The garden club does have some funding. They were very generous last year in redoing the storyteller's chair and the storytelling benches. We also worked with various local rotaries to get funding for that, so I believe that once we get a little bit further on with our project, we can tap into those resources as well. I also know that the Friends of the Little House have been very good tenants. Actually, they've replaced the roof on that house, they've replaced the water heater, they've replaced the furnace, so they do have some funds available to put towards this project as well.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have questions? Thank you so very much. Did you have something?
Thank you for your time, and thanks for, you know, and I'm, I think when we have a little more detail, obviously, when we're really kind of, we'll have to have, generate a lot more detail on a plan to actually go out to bid, but we wanted at least include you folks early on in the process, so you know it was something we were thinking about, and have it on your radar in any event, so we appreciate the time.
Great, thank you so much. Thanks for being here.
I just have one little FYI, because as a Girl Scout Little House, it is historic. Girl Scout Little House was a project that was started back in like the 1930s with, I believe it was President Hoover's wife, and then Eleanor Roosevelt sort of took over it as well. We are one of the few remaining Girl Scout Little Houses in the United States, so, and it looks completely different than it did when it was the carriage house for the Miles Hume's family that resided there, but the, the structure that is currently there was done in the 1960s. And so, at that time, there was a little bit different priorities, and we really feel now somewhat negligent in not making it more handicapped accessible throughout the years, and we, we know this is our time to do it now, so thank you.
Thank you very much. It's budget season. Ms. McGowan?
It is budget season. Welcome back. So, tonight, I have three funds. I usually pick some easy ones, easier ones to get our heads back in the process, mine and yours. So, we have street lighting, EMS, and liquid fuels. So, for the street lighting, if you remember, the lights that are throughout town, we call them goosenecks or clovers, they belong to West Penn Power. We don't have to do any maintenance on those, those are in the cost of the electricity. So, we pay for the electricity for those, but not the actual pools. But the ones that are downtown, that are decorative, belong to us. We have to maintain them and pay for the electricity. So, for this year, we had budgeted $55,000 to do some upgrades to those. The, we had $25,000 for We had $25,000 for wages and $25,000 for materials and supplies, but with all the upheaval that we had this year, we did, that kind of got put on the back burner. And as it turns out, it's probably kind of a good thing when we talk to, our electricity bid runs out in November, and when we did a preliminary talk with them, they're talking about doubling what we currently pay. We had an incredible rate. Rates really went up, so their preliminary was to double it. So, Matt and I talked, and I talked to Dave about it, and we put the upgrades on hold. We felt that was most prudent for next year, and we'll put that extra money into the electricity. We'll see where that actually falls, and then we can revisit that again. But for right now, we thought it would be most prudent to put that money toward the electricity, till we see where it actually is going to fall. So, there's no increase in taxes. This is a tax revenue fund, so there is no changes. It just is that we're shifting it from some maintenance for next year to electricity.
When does the contract renewals? Is that in November for electricity?
Yeah, so was it about two weeks ago? We talked to them and we got the process started, so it's underway. I'm not sure if they gave us a time when they were going to have it done.
Should be about two weeks from when they issued the RFP, so we went back and forth with them a little bit to try to get all of our account numbers accurate, because there's a few that were added and revised last, since our last contract. So, it shouldn't take long. If we don't have some options and a recommendation for council at the next meeting, it would be the following.
So, if the rates were to actually come in lower, then those funds could be shifted back to maintenance and upgrades?
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely, they could be.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions on that? Thank you.
So, the next fund is the EMS fund. Again, it's supported by tax revenue. This is totally, they turn in their invoices to us, we pay them. That it's all EMS expenses, except for a little bit for office supplies. I did not make any changes. I know he had put a letter in the packet, I think it was last time, and asked for higher funding. You can decide that. For now, I kept it the same. That'll be a decision that you have to make when we get closer to finalizing.
Laurie, what's the mill on that right now? Is it .4 or .45?
So, right now, it's .3. We took it from .25 to .3 last year.
Oh, I thought we took it to 4. I thought we took it to 4 last.
Did we? All right, maybe I have it wrong. I'll double check that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and with, and part of the discussion, of course, we won't decide anything right now, was to take that up to what I believe is our max, which is .5. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that is our max that we can go to per the state.
Okay, okay. Yeah, if you don't mind following up on that. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
No, hey, I could be wrong.
So, that's that one. And lastly, is liquid fuels. Liquid fuels, we get an allocation from the state. It is highly regulated. They give, they do a separate audit just on this, so we are very careful what we spend it on. You can use it for snow and ice removal, you can use it for storm drains, we use it for paving, for major and minor equipment, things like pickup trucks and snow plows and salt spreaders. So, Matt had given his list of what he felt we needed for next year. We always do a street paving project. We've been putting storm drains in there, because our storm drains are, as he said, they're collapsing. He put in a boom mower attachment to clear roadways of overgrowth, a new snow plow, and a salt spreader. So, all those things are in here. We do have an allocation, we can use 20% of what we get for major equipment. You can carry that from year to year. So, for next year, he had the 49.5 for major equipment, $18,000 for minor equipment, $100,000 for project work, and the 75 for storm sewers and drains. We have not heard formally what we're getting, so I kept it a flat rate. We're hoping that we hear of that soon, and I can adjust it if we need to. So, that's pretty much that one in a nutshell.
So, Laurie, we know, we will know then exactly what that will be for next year, or is it a guess a little bit?
So, they give us an estimate of what they think. It's usually not exactly what we get, but that's the estimate that I use. That's the only thing I have, so it's, I've never seen it be exactly on, but it's usually relatively close.
Pretty close, okay.
So, and I thought we'd have it by now, but we don't. So, I just kept it kind of where we budgeted last year, and if we get a little bit more, that's great, and we'll just have to wait and see.
Great, so it looks like we can cover everything that Matt needs by moving those around a little bit? Is that correct?
Yes, yes. We can cover what we need to, and this one, this is my hardest one, because I don't have a crystal ball to know what, how much snow we're going to get. So, this one is kind of a fluid fund, because if we get a lot of snow, then we have to adjust things accordingly. We may not be able to do as many storm sewers or whatever, because the priority obviously is to clear snow, so it's my best guess based on prior years and reading on the internet what they thought they were going to get, so.
And any other questions, please, Doug?
So, I'm looking at the boom mower attachment to clear roadways of overgrowth, and you may not be able to answer this, but how frequently, I'm trying to think of the streets in Belfont and where that might be used.
I don't have an answer. I can find that out.
Well, yeah, I think I'd like to find that out. And I'm curious, if we only use it twice a year, could we rent one for probably five grand? I, you know, I see those mowers being used out on rural roads, but when I think of Belfont, I think of mostly residential streets. I know along the waterfront, we're not permitted to mow the shrubbery that's close to the stream by the Fish and Boat Commission. The school takes care of theirs, all the businesses on Bishop Street. Maybe other council members could enlighten me where we might use a mower like that, that it's worth $50,000 out of our liquid fuels budget.
Yeah, that's a very good point, Doug. I don't know, I was thinking of Stony Batter was a place where, and they may have, I don't usually go that way, but I don't know, so I think that's a really good question.
Spend $50,000 to mow that small Stony Batter?
Absolutely.
It'd make a lot sense to me.
And would it be possible to work with another municipality that may have one and just to rent it from them or borrow it, or, you know, shared resources?
I need an explanation from Matt. I just, to me, I don't see where we would use that thing so much, that we're going to spend $50,000 for it, when you could probably go out to Unlimited or Kissel Rental, or whatever the one is out in Pleasant Gap, and rent it for a day, and take care of whatever mowings, which probably would be twice a year. That's just a question.
Yeah, good point. Thank you, Doug. That's a very good point. Laurie, would you be able to follow up on that?
Oh, yes, I'll follow up and I'll let you know.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
I think I recall Matt saying at one of our streets meetings, that he did have some sort of an agreement with the local municipality to borrow theirs. I feel like I remember him saying that, whether it was maybe Spring or Benner or something.
I know they do share equipment, like a tar buggy, some other things that I don't come to mind right this minute. Matt has them on the top of his head, but I just don't see that, I see it sitting in the shop more than out on the road being used in our borough.
Great, well, I think we'll get some input from Matt on what that was, and we can discuss, we can discuss that again then.
Yes, I'll find out and let you know.
Thank you very much. Anything else on anything tonight?
Thank you, Laurie. You've eased us in to budget. We appreciate it very much.
Not a problem. Do you have something to add, Dave?
What's that?
You look like you have something to add.
Nope.
Nope, okay.
The wheels are turning.
Uh-oh. Great, thanks so much.
Great, thanks so much.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Balfont Borough Council Business Meeting. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Clayton, could we have roll call for attendance, please?
Mr. Bernier.
Present.
Mr. Brackville.
Here.
Ms. Clayton, here. Ms. Dan.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. McKean.
Here.
Ms. Purnell.
Here.
Ms. Sedgwick is excused. Ms. Tosty Vacy is excused. Ms. Meckley?
Here.
And Mayor Johnson is excused. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clayton. In accordance with Act 65 of 2021, if a matter is not on the agenda, council cannot take official action on it, with some exceptions. The council can act on matters relating to potential or real emergencies. Council may add a matter of agency business to the agenda through a majority vote. The council should state the reason why the action is being added to the agenda. Council may vote to add an action item to the agenda. We do have one thing that we're actually would like to remove tonight, and it is relating to the settlement agreement with the Geisinger Building. Could I have a motion in a second to remove that from the agenda for tonight?
I'll make that motion, Madam President. The approval of settlement agreement for Geisinger Building assessment, we could remove that. I'm making the motion to remove that from the agenda tonight.
Thank you, Doug. Could I have a second, please?
I'll second Brackville.
Thank you, Randy. Is there any discussion on that? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Where is it listed at?
It is under New Business. It is the third.
Got it, got it.
Yes, please.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to add something to the agenda this evening, and it's something that we had talked about the last couple of days, but what I wanted to do from my report, I'm not going to do the whole thing tonight because it's at that time, but I do want to get approval to have Mr. Allman determine how many safety signs are needed and appropriate for the safe, for safe signs being attached to stone walls. This goes between the Veterans Bridge and the Suspension Bridge.
Okay, and I think that's in, it's listed here.
Is it in here?
It is. Let me find it for you here.
It is listed under New Business.
Thank you. It's the fourth, fourth item down for that. Is that okay, Randy?
Yep.
Great, thank you very much. Is there anything else before we move on? Public comments. Borough Council intends to take public comment related to the motion that is on the floor after it has been duly made and seconded. The order of comments will be public comment then council comment, including proposed amendments by council members. If amendments are proposed to the original motion, the public will then only comment on the amendments before final votes are taken. You must be a Balfont resident, a nonprofit representative, a business owner, or an official representative of another governmental agency. Speakers shall identify themselves by name and street, municipality, if outside the Borough of Balfont. Comments are limited to three minutes. Under Communications tonight, we do have from Balfont EMS, the third quarter municipal update. There is no council action requested on that. Another communication is concerns regarding parking enforcement in downtown Balfont. We did have noted on here that council may take action, but what I'd like to do is refer this to the chief, and then he can work with parking enforcement on that if that's agreeable to everyone. We don't need to vote on that.
Just a question. Is this the one about the Happy, Happy thing?
Yes, that was who had written.
For some reason, we stopped that for a little bit, and I'm not sure why. There was confusion of it. All we're trying to do is get a parking space over there, and it either can be, at one point, we had it in front of the store and some, then it went away somewhere, but I think there's enough space. I don't know whether it makes sense to have somebody park up in the municipal parking lot and walk all the way down.
Oh, Randy, I think that was something else. That was a different business that she wanted the parking meter bag. That's different than this one. There were two, you're correct. There were.
Then that one's, you should have got that letter from the person who was complaining about it, because I got it. I don't know if it was.
I'm not sure which one. Are you talking about the gentleman from Happy Wraps?
Yes.
Or the other business? Okay.
Yeah, that's the parking area, yeah, that he was.
Well, we're, we're going to forward, since the chief takes care of that and parking, we'll forward it to him, and then if anything needs changed, it will go to the ordinance committee at that point, and then back to council.
Thank you.
Heavier truck pilot project in the news. There is no council action requested. Ms. Clayton, I know you're very active with that. Is there anything you would like to add?
The document that's in your packet is just an update on where the legislation stands at this point as it's moving through Washington, and also some links to newspaper articles about response to this project from across the country. It's something that I've been following because it will affect us if there are bigger, heavier trucks on the interstates. They're going to be on our local roads also, and our local road and bridge infrastructure is not necessarily adequate to accommodate these bigger, heavier vehicles. And I would like to mention that we are at the PSAB conference this weekend, and PSAB endorses the CABT and the work that they're doing to try and limit the increase in size and weight of freight haulers.
Great, thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for Debbie on that? We also have in Communications, a thank you to the Balfont Elks Club for the generous donation to the Balfont Borough Police Department. Again, no action requested. Chief, did you want to add anything to that or talk about what was done with that donation?
Yes, the donation came from the Garber Fund. We applied for a grant. We're graciously granted the grant. This year, so you don't know, we had two in-car computers just quit working on us. Those weren't budgeted items. They run about $3,100 apiece, so any donation we got from the Elks Club, we greatly appreciate. So, thank you.
Great, that's very generous of them. Under Consent Agenda, all items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of council request specific items to be removed for separate action. Could I have a motion in a second, please, to approve this consent agenda?
So move, Brackville.
Thank you, Randy.
I'll second it, Clayton.
Thank you, Debbie. Is there any discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Under Reports, Ms. Meckley, did you have something for tonight?
Yes, I did. So, these past few weeks have been very homecoming heavy. The high school just finished up with their homecoming festivities with the parade on Thursday, September 25th, and the football game on the 26th, where Sadie's daughter and Vale Olsen were crowned homecoming king and queen, and we sadly lost to the Eagles, 19 to 14. We also threw our dance on Saturday, the 4th, which was a huge success for our student council team as we sold over 400 tickets. This was amazing because it is student council's only fundraiser, and this helps us improve school-wide and community events like homecoming every single year. So, that was the big update for this past little while.
Great, thank you very much. That's all good news. Ms. Thompson with the OCA memo, everybody received that. It was submitted. There's no action needed on that. Mr. Prabalka has his report. Did you want to add anything or if anybody has any questions at all?
I can answer any questions if anybody has.
Great, thank you very much. Under Current and Old Business, the revised minimum municipal obligation for pensions, 2026 budget, council must also re-adopt the resolution related to the police pension program each year. It is Resolution Number 10062025-01. For the police, it is $45,595. Could I have a motion in a second to approve this, please?
So move, Brackville.
Second, Clayton.
Thank you. Is there a discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Nittany Communications Group LLC proposal to use the Purdue Mountain Tower site to support the deployment of Project 25 radio infrastructure. I will first need a motion in a second to remove this from the table from last meeting, please.
I'll make that motion, Purnell.
Thank you, Rita.
I'll second Brackville.
Thank you. Any discussion on that? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
And Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, I would like a motion in a second to form a written agreement with Nittany Communications.
So move.
Thank you. Shawna? Thank you. Okay, I would like to have some discussion on this, and David is here tonight, so I thought maybe he could talk to us first. Would, is that all right with you? Okay, great.
Button here. Okay, there we go. Thank you for having me again. My name is David Mason. I am the CEO of Nittany Communications. I'm here to answer any questions you might have about our proposal. I'm not sure. I think it was, we reviewed it at the last meeting, and it was tabled. I'm not sure if anybody had any questions or how they wanted to go through with that.
We had a note in our packet from Matt Allman. He was a little concerned that the tower has aged, and he was wanting to make sure the structure was safe for you guys to climb and mount your equipment. So, I'm willing to approve this based on the approval of an engineer who, of your choice, who will check the tower out and make sure it's safe for you guys to climb.
Okay, we can make that happen. I, the gentleman who's going to climb the tower for us, I will see if he, I'm not sure what, if he would have a qualification for that. I know he has the qualifications to do the climbing, and he's familiar with, Motorola has a standard called R56 that they use for how everything should be installed. I will have to get with him and ask him if he can make that determination, but from looking at the tower, it is aged, but it's in better shape from most towers that I've seen, but we can absolutely get somebody to look at that.
Thanks very much.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
What other questions?
I just thank you for coming, making a second trip and coming back.
Absolutely, yeah.
Help clarify.
Thank you for having me.
Yes, so just to be clear, this motion is just to approve, sorry, approve doing the agree, doing the agreement on this with Nittany Communications, so I assume that we will then have that come back to council after that.
Okay.
So, we do have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion or questions? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, David, very much. Onto New Business, we have a list of items to be auctioned at Munisabid. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the provided list to be auctioned on Munisabid?
I'll make that motion. McKean.
Thank you, Shawna.
Brackville?
Thank you, Randy. Is there any discussion on this? You did receive this list in your packet. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
And Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Thank you.
The 2024 Borough Audit Transmission Memorandum. There is no council action requested, but you did receive that tonight. The Safety Signage Along the Stonewall and Tallyran Park, recommended by the Infrastructure and Public Works Committee. Could I have a motion and a second to direct Public Works Superintendent to research appropriate signage to be placed on the stone wall between the walking bridge and Veterans' Bridge?
I'll make that motion, Brackville.
Thank you, Randy.
Second, Clayton.
Thank you, Debbie. Is there any discussion on this?
Does that have to be approved by the Parks Committee? The signage? Just asking, it has to be run by those folks? I don't know if we've done that in the past or not for feeding the ducks and all that jazz.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. It couldn't hurt, right?
Yeah, I probably would do that and ask for their advice. Well, the main thing is that liabilities, you know, could be an issue if, because they, you know, a lot of times in the summer, you see people having their kids on the wall. I'm all for it, Randy. I'm just asking a question whether, whether it shouldn't be run through them. And there should be signs on both sides of that wall, from the bridges, between the bridges.
Okay, maybe you could contact Parks Committee and try to work through that with them, and with Matt then, and see what kind of information we can get. Would that be appropriate?
Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you very much.
Who is it? Who is it?
Parks is, Parks is going in.
Do I have? Oh, okay, I'm on that committee.
Yes. So, that worked out well. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
And Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Thank you.
The NJVPC recommendation to appoint Gina Thompson as the Nittany Valley Joint Planning Regions Representative to the Technical Committee of the Center County Metropolitan Planning Agency. Could I have a motion and a second to approve the appointment?
I'll make the motion, Johnson.
I'll second to Clayton.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions on this? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
And Ms. Purnell?
Thank you.
Okay, public comment regarding issues not on the agenda. This public comment period is for oral comments regarding items not listed on the meeting agenda. Speakers shall identify themselves by name and street, municipality, if outside the borough of Bellefonte. Comments are listed to three minutes maximum. We have no one tonight. Council member comments for the good of the order. Mr. Johnson, would you like to start tonight?
Just reminding folks, the leaf truck will be starting this week, I believe, so rake those leaves out to the curb, not on the street. Have a good time.
Thank you. Ms. McKean?
Or you could keep your leaves and provide habitat for little critters. So, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, as well as Breast Cancer Awareness. Once again, I pointed this out last year, with domestic violence, it is a focus of mine in my work, and so I would like people to reach out. Women can go to Center Safe. They can reach out to the local police department. There are different facilities. We have the kennel here in Bellefonte, who will take your animals and keep them for you if you have to leave your home, and I don't know if there's a charge for that or not. It would be minimum, I'm sure, if anything, but there are ways to get out. Make sure you have a plan. And I guess that's it for domestic violence.
Thank you, Shawna. That's good information. Thank you. Mr. Bernier?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Surprisingly, I don't have anything either.
You're letting me down here.
Sorry.
Ms. Meckley, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No.
That's fine. Mr. Brackville?
Well, we were busy over the weekend with PSAB, and I think things went very well there. We learned a lot, a lot more than we thought we had, and I think it went smoothly, and it was important stuff going around, so that's it.
I agree.
Stay away from the caffeine.
What's that?
Stay away from the caffeine.
We learned our lesson. Ms. Clayton?
Yes, October 5th through 11th is Fire, National Fire Prevention Week, so this is a good time to upgrade or update the batteries in your smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors, and make sure that you do not have things blocking the entrance or exit to your home, not just for your safety, but for emergency responders. It just helps everybody out. And I'd also like to thank Public Works for the upgrading that they've done on the street light heads, particularly on South Allegheny Street between High and Bishop. The visibility there is greatly improved at night. It's much easier to see the crosswalks and see pedestrians, so thank you.
I was also at the PSAB conference. It was a great conference, as it always is. I do want to add a side note. Alyssa went. Shawna, that was your first time at PSAB. Southwood was well represented because Randy, Debbie, and I all were there too. It was really, it was a nice time, and I certainly learned a lot while I was there. So, thank you for the borough for supporting us attending the PSAB conference. Mr. Provokha, do you have anything you'd like to add tonight?
No, thank you.
Great. Okay, can I have a motion and a second to adjourn, please?
So moved, Brackville.
Thank you, Shawna. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We are adjourned. It is 7:53.